So I'm going to call to order the meeting of the Arlington ISD Board of Trustees for September 5th, 2024. We're going to call it at 6:26 PM. The first item on our agenda tonight is a workshop on governance. 5:26, there we go. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Smith and Ms. McRae.
Hi, everybody. Students, welcome. This is an exciting night because we get to see students again at our board meetings and stuff. I can promise you, I can speak for trustees on one thing, and that's we all missed you at meetings last month. Because in August, we don't have students at our meetings very, very much. And so we miss seeing students. And so thank you for being here. We're excited about you and your leadership. And we're excited to have you as a part of a workshop here tonight. We didn't necessarily plan this, to have you a part of this workshop, like a grand plan ahead of time. But as things were coming together, we realized usually we have Slab students meet with our trustees at the beginning of the year, and we have to do some great work together as a team of eight, as we call the trustees and myself. Then it'd be great to have another workshop and an opportunity to sit with students and have you dialogue with us tonight. So thank you for being here. We're excited about your school year and your experience in Arlington ISD. We appreciate you. I, I'll just be honest to this whole group and trustees, I think I've told you all this before. One of the, one of the most exciting things about coming to Arlington as a new superintendent to this district six months ago was the amazing work that had been done in the past. I know, you all know my reverence for Dr. Cavassos. And I also have to tell you, it's an extremely daunting task to step into a role after Dr. Cavassos. And so as we've started working through things over the past few months, one of the things that is on my mind on a daily basis is how do we build relationships between the Board of Trustees and myself as a team of eight? Because no matter what I do, I am not Dr. Cavassos, even though I'd like to be on a lot of days, right? And, but there's, when you add a new member to a team, it becomes a new team. And so trying to figure out how we have constant conversations about how we work together and how we develop that partnership is important to me. So thank you for agreeing to have a workshop tonight to start to talk about some of these things. Because I think with myself, with Mr. Mike as a new trustee, with Leanne and Brooklyn coming on a year ago, having conversation about how we work together and diving into things like the Board Handbook is an important step along the way. Sarah, anything you want to say?
Yeah, and I was just going to say, to kind of rewind a little bit. Y'all remember our Team of Eight workshop with Orin from TASB? The original plan was to come through the Board Handbook in depth with Orin, but time just wasn't on our side. And so we really planned on doing this already. But now we're recommitting to it so we can have protected time to look at the Board Handbook together as a team. Not just to consider potential updates, but also just to review it as a team, so we can owe it. And if there's something in here that we need to update, revise, we will take a formal action later on in the fall to officially update the Board Handbook. But for right now, we thought it would be valuable just for us to review as a team of eight and make sure that whatever goes in here, we, we can all owe as individuals and as a team.
So getting us started tonight, you all have a copy of the handbook along the way. If you haven't received this yet, Sam has a copy for you of this book that I think is an important piece of the puzzle, too. And for those of you that remember CRSS training, this book was the foundation for that CRSS training or the Holdford training that a couple trustees went to recently. In there, there's a, a step-by-step kind of framework that they refer to about good governance. And I think it's important for us to have those discussions along the way. And why I bring that up, they start really big about talking about the board vision and core beliefs. And I think we need to invest some time in that. And so I mentioned it to our officers the last time we met. I think we can scope up some opportunities to dive into that. And why I bring that up is as you open the first page, or it'll be your third page, excuse me, of the Board Handbook, just past the calendar, there are some big things in there like the goal, the core beliefs, the vision, the mission, et cetera. I don't think we necessarily need to get into those tonight. I think we have to take enough time to really dive into that over the course of the fall and maybe into the spring in various settings, so that we have some clear, consistent discussion about that. But I think also, we have the ability to start to go through and really talk about the operating procedures pieces, where trustees should, what the superintendent should, what kind of agreements we need to make, and how we operate together as a team as we navigate some of those important governance discussions over the course of the next few months. Good leadership that this board has shown for years is the foundation of good work that's been done for a long period of time. And you see that reflected in policy. So some of these things that you see like in that page I just referenced is all a direct, a direct reference to Policy AE, educational philosophy that this board adopted back in 2013, I think it was. And so we have to revisit those big, broad overarching things about what we believe is a school district to. But tonight, I think the intent was to really get into some of the nitty-gritty about how we agree to work together, what the board needs from each other in the, in the handbook. And so we're just going to walk through page by page if that works for y'all. And hopefully you've taken a look at a little bit of this before we got here tonight. Does that sound like a plan for everybody? Great. Sarah, do you want to start on calendar page or on the page following that? Where the trustee should, trustee should not, what?
Sure. Are y'all okay with this format? Just kind of going page by page and taking it that way? And if there's anything that you guys don't think is worth our attention, we could just say, okay, we can skip that one.
I do want to say something on the calendar before we skip it.
Absolutely. Let's start there.
So, yeah. One, always make sure this is, as you know, has been wolfly outdated for a while versus what our practice is. And I think our board calendar should also be a living document and more electronic and be constantly updated. And hopefully, our executive team committee is looking to, a month or two down the line. If we have to shift something or move a big topic in, it'd be nice to have a electronic calendar or a place that we can go and say, what's going to be on the first meeting in November's calendar? And that it's not such a mystery. I know a lot of work is done before that with the executive committee to build the agenda, but a lot of that planning and spacing has been done ahead of time. And so to the extent possible, if we could have a document that is more up-to-date so that we kind of know what to expect and know what to do our homework on, that would help make my job as a trustee easier.
I think that's an easy ask for us. We're working on that right now. This, this part in the Board Handbook, what I proposed to you back in June that I'd like to switch to is we would list something in here that says, here are the required things that we have to present to you at this time of the year. But there's a more detailed version that you as trustees actually get, maybe every six months, so that you can weigh in on things and say, hey, you know, I'd like to go in more depth about this goal that we haven't discussed fully here. And is there a way for us to work it in in the November agenda? So I definitely think we're, we're almost there to give you that electronic version. And that's the deeper, more detailed version that we use as an admin team. And this that would be in the Board Handbook would just be updated on the things that are maybe required by month.
The Board has to. The adoption of the tax.
That's right. That we know comes every time during the year. Does that work?
Anyone else have anything on calendar? Okay. I made it though. Thank you, David. I noticed right away on the golden beliefs page, the header is 2016-2021. And we got to take, I think it's the only page that has that header. Anyone have anything on goal, beliefs, vision, mission, and performance objective categories? Are we diving into these tonight or are we doing that later?
I'd suggest that we, we take a little bit more detailed time on those and we move on to the other parts. Because I think, you know.
My note is that I really want to visit on all of these, but I doubt I'm going to take them for a while.
Yeah, understood.
So should we do it now or?
I'd hold on that because I think we can spend more time very detailed about spending the whole time on what our core beliefs are.
Yes.
And just to expectation set, we do have a pretty heavy closed agenda tonight. So just as we're going through, it'd be cognizant of, I'd like us to be out of here given the transition by 6:05, 6:10. Because we just, we're looking to go out at seven and we've got several items on closed session tonight.
Okay. All right. BIOS, everyone can send in their own update when you get back.
If Vince is listening, I'd like a new photo, please.
They said that anytime we want our board those updated, we actually can contact them and they can come in and do it. But that's not a problem.
Okay, the next part. Trustees shall, and then the following page with the T-shirt, trustees should, trustees should not. I want to live here for a minute because I know that, I think that these are good, honestly, but I want to hear everyone's thoughts on, does anything need to be brushed off? Does anything need to be added? I know that Larry and Leanne and Matt went to an awesome Holdford training and they got an in-depth look at, you know, I don't want to say it wrong, but guardrails and like what elected officials should and should not do. So I really would love to kind of delve into this part of the handbook over any other and make sure that we're really getting what we want out of this part of the handbook. Not just for ourselves, but for future board members after, after our time is up.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Is the code for stability the same as the code of ethics that we're supposed to find annually? So before I asked my follow-up, I wanted the code of, on page 12, it references the code of ethics. It reads like that might be a state document we're supposed to sign, but I didn't know if it was meaning the code for stability.
So it says to, okay, so that, section 10. So it says it should, we should review the code of ethics annually and be knowledgeable about it. But the signature it's talking about is a statement of disclosure. So if you have a potential conflict of interest, there is a form for that that you would sign and file with the district.
So is this then the code of ethics we're reviewing annually, this code for stability?
Yes, so, so just to give a little bit of background. So these, this chart that is now on page seven, there was a really substantial revision to the Board Handbook done right around COVID, pre-COVID. And these were much longer and there was a lot of extraneous stuff and they were pared down. But you can find a lot of these. They actually come from, there's a board policy on board ethics. I forget the number or the letter for it right now. But you will find a lot of these in the actual, in actual board policy.
Okay, so just because the note I made was about reviewing this code for stability annually. So if we're already supposed to be doing that, if it's supposed to go to ethics?
Right, they're, they're pretty much, they're pretty much one in the same. And, and when we, we're supposed to review the Board Handbook annually. And so really, when we review the Board Handbook, we're also reviewing our ethics guidelines. But that's sort of how these are interrelated.
And that's a good question, because I didn't know that.
That's a good question. So then my follow-up to that is that I know that I brought this up to Justin and Dr. Smith, that I wanted some board norms and these read like board norms. And so if we could make a more intentional effort of actually reading them out loud at the start of the year and recommitting to them, I would appreciate that.
That's a great suggestion.
I was almost going to say for, for this page, why don't we, to make it more interactive, why don't we kind of take turns reading pieces of it aloud for the good of the group? Are y'all cool with that?
Sure, and just, just for reference, the ethics policies are found in BDF local.
So is that linked on the last page that's kind of like an appendage? Yeah, that has, okay, I get it, I get it. All right, Brooklyn. Ma'am, will you please take this part? Can you read that part to us?
Oh, is any of the students read too or just her?
Oh, we can do it however.
Students, students are like, oh, no.
I've got enough reading for today.
Do you want the red word for word teacher leaves? Okay. Trustees shall strive to put the needs of children above the wants of adults to make decisions that promote the educational welfare of all children in the district. The conduct of individuals and collective board trustees should reflect that they are role models. It is the intent of this code to address issues of governance and to make sure that trustees understand and maintain proper relationships among the board, administration, district employees, students, and the public. Trustees represent the community, not the superintendent or the district. Trustees as individuals shall not exercise authority over the district, its property, or its employees. Except for appropriate duties and functions of the board president, a trustee may act on behalf of the board only with express authorization of the board. Without such authorization, no trustee may commit to the board on any issue.
What's our count to y'all there? The first sentence. Okay. Trustees shall strive, that one? Yep. Trustees shall strive to put the needs of children above the wants of adults and to make decisions that promote the educational welfare of all children in the district. And that's, that's kind of what CRSS and Holdford and all the formal training we've all gotten collectively have, have taught us. And that's what I hope we can all, we ambassadors, communicate to the community is, unlike other elected officials, including city council, we are elected to be a voice for our students. Not one pocket of, of, you know, the community where we live, not even adults in the community, but we are here on behalf of the needs of children. And so I think that's really powerful, really powerful. And we're representatives of the community, not the district. That's what kind of stuck out to me. Kind of, kind of drawing a line to this hand where governance is different from Dr. Smith and operation.
I think this is fine, just the way it is.
I think so, too.
Focus on the kids.
All right.
I, I think it's a good, I like, yes, I think it's fine. But I think at some point, we have to reiterate to our community that that is our focus. Because so often, we know as elected officials is that when we run for office, we have certain areas of our city that vote for us. But those areas of our city aren't the ones that have all students. And so what can we do to lift this up? We live it out all the time, but what can we do as a better reminder to remind stakeholders that, you know, we literally serve all, not just those who vote, not just those certain. We have to do it for everyone. What could we do better? Say that. When and where?
Any chance we get? So like I highlighted that first sentence because putting the needs of children above the wants of adults, just that part alone, I could repeat very regularly. And I don't feel like I've ever had it articulated just that plainly and that bluntly. And so that will be used by me on a regular basis. Because I don't care what walk of life you're coming from, that's pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
You know, and I don't, I don't know if this has been done in the past, I bet it has. But it, even when we have the opportunities like trustee talks or whatever format they may come in for the future, just to be able to have a few minutes at the beginning of the meeting to frame what that role is and to use a statement like that to make sure that the public constantly hears what you all are committing to through this Board Handbook and through these statements, I think is, is powerful. So to your point, it's not even just saying it in your individual conversations. It's when we have the opportunity to have board members be in front of different groups and just remind the public, here's what we're about, here's what we're committing to, here's what we're about. And we can have some, some concept slides that can use for that. Yeah, we have one already that talks about the role.
It's like a Venn diagram kind of thing, but we can add this.
The trustee, and this would dovetail nicely with that slide.
Yeah, because this is very straightforward, like there's no.
I'm going to think way outside the box. You tell me I'm way out of line with this one. But is that something we could start all of our meetings with even as a reminder? Like Justin reads off, President Chopper reads off every time, that we are here, legal accordance, this is what we do, no public shall whatever. And by the way, we are upholding this as a board while we are up here on this dais. Is that something we can include? Matt, it's Dr. Smith's face. I, I, but is there a place in our meetings that where we start?
Mine was a good face. I thought that was good.
Yeah. Is that a way that we start our meetings as a reminder to each of us that no matter what's about to come out of our mouths, where, where is our loyalty lying and what we're about to say?
That's something I can take under advisement for sure.
You know, for me, we can weave those things in wherever the board wants. That's, that's our job is, in having this conversation is to, after we get to a final document, come to some agreement on how we want to see these things come to life. And then our administrative team can help make those things come to life. So if it's, if it's for an opening script for a board meeting or an opening script, we can do whatever's needed there.
Good idea. And just a side note for our Slab students, we are actually named trustees because we are entrusted by those who elect us to represent y'all and be, be a representative for all children. So that's a good way to remember it because the trust is the reward. And that's what we're supposed to be doing. So that's awesome. Okay, trustees should, trustees should not. Larry, Mike, can you read trustees should for us? Go down the line.
Trustees should follow the board policy. Recognize that they are only authorized to take action in an official capacity as trustees of the board as a whole. Respect the role of the administration and refrain from encroaching on managerial duties. Give the superintendent's office courtesy notice when visiting schools, independently attending school functions, or contacting staff. Come to board meetings prepared. Attend all scheduled board meetings insofar as is possible. Recognize that email, text messages, and social media are forms of communication that are subject to guidelines in this document and is outlined in the Texas Open Meetings Act. Reserve the right to disagree, but will not be disagreeable. Pledge to keep comments relevant and germane to the published agenda. Discuss any board handbook violations in executive session unless otherwise advised by legal counsel. Accept and offer criticism without anger. Ask questions to obtain information that is reasonably related to district business. Model professionalism expected of district employees. Trustees should not.
Keep going.
Berate another trustee or school employee. Represent that they as individuals have authority to act on behalf of the board, the district, or the administration. Deliberate in violation of the Texas Open Meetings Act outside the board meeting through personal conversations, electronic communications, or other means of conversations. Try to solve complaints or grievances individually or outside established procedures for complaints or grievances. Directly negotiate with vendors or bidders regarding any district business. Individually evaluate, refer man, or direct staff. Pressure staff members into making particular recommendations or decisions with items on the agenda that are not reasonably related to district business.
Very good. Larry, Mike, can I ask you a question? As a new trustee, what's, what are some that really you appreciate being in here? Because I know that Justin and I come through this with you. And I know that you're, you're kind of in the, tossed in the fan now. What are some shoulds or should nots that you think are very tightly held for us that we must commit to and you appreciate them being in writing?
Well, all, but if I'm going to point out who wants to really stick out to me. The third one for trustee should, as far as encroaching on managerial duties, that has been a big teaching point in all the training that I've gone to. You understand your role and you understand your leg. That's one. The, what was the disagreement? Do you ever have a disagreeable on it?
Yeah. Reserve the right.
Oh, yeah, reserve the right to disagree, but will not be disagreeable. We've seen throughout North Texas and all throughout Texas, you have school boards that are dysfunctional. You have folks who, they go to town. And the one thing that I like about this being here and the way this board is structured and how we work well with each other is, we can disagree. But still, again, we understand our roles. And we're able to come together as a whole and then work in conjunction with each other for the school district and for the students. So that was something to me. The should nots. You know, this one here, we get a lot of emails, a lot, from parents and different folks. So I would say to try to solve complaints or grievances. Because they will come to you and ask you things in emails that are not trustees' roles. I think just recently, there was an email that I saw that Jessica responded, or President Chopper responded to, that let the parent know that's, that's not our role. And here's the administration, and here's the people that we go to. And so a lot of times, even people who vote for us, they don't know particularly what we do and what our roles are. They think that we can hire or fire coaches, fire teachers.
We can.
We don't do any of that. That's not our leg. So what I think about trustees is we ensure that we go through the right channels. And if there's anything that comes to us, we elevate it for a meeting.
Very good. And when, when we talk about we can disagree but not being disagreeable, I, that's where I really appreciate each of y'all because I feel like that's one area that our board shines. It's, once a vote comes out in the wash, we move forward. And ever since I've been on the board, even with former trustees who are no longer here, that is an example that has been set for me. And so that's the example that we need to set for each other and for, you know, future board members. So I hope we can keep the momentum going strong on that. Is there anything anyone wants to revise about these? Oh, yeah, sorry, David.
Yeah, something you just said, Sarah. You had something on, I thought we should codify. And that's, you know, we all have just one vote. Sometimes, as Larry was saying, the vote doesn't go our way. But yet, we as a board, we accept the decision of the board. And should we have language around that in the should section? Kind of.
So that used to appear, that used to appear in the, in the Board Handbook. And the, we can revisit that. The reason that that was taken out is there were, this was several years ago, a series of pretty close votes and some people went back and forth afterwards because it was just, they were hard decisions to make. And folks felt like people might be on, put in the position of having to stick with something that it seemed later on, maybe more than three trustees were interested in revisiting, but felt like they were led into a decision that they were no longer comfortable with. So that's why that was taken out of, to not create a norm, because there's a difference between, the thought was, and this is my, you can tell the side I was on. The thought was is that there's a difference between being respectful in disagreement. And we have been respectful in disagreement and we've taken some tough votes and disagreed on them. And I feel like we've adhered to these policies pretty well. But there's a difference between being able to do that and then creating a norm that something is set in stone as a matter of policy, even if later on, it seems like maybe that wasn't the right move to make. And that the trustees who felt that way should be held to a policy that it set that expectation.
Not be worthy of talking. I understand. And my view is that once a decision's made, we don't ever go back and revisit it.
But we could.
Yeah.
For some reason, I gave you something that we needed.
That's what I was trying to say. That we couldn't, yeah, we should always, if we feel the need that we need to go back and revisit, we should. Mine was more from the standpoint of, you know, not apologizing for my vote where I was, I've been on a 6-1 vote and I've been the one. And I don't apologize for that and I have my reasoning for that, but I accept the will of the board. That's the decision and, and I support it. Now, in the future, if it comes up, I might still vote that way and hope that my colleagues would see my side of it. But I know we're, there are seven of us. And, and that's, I think good governance is, is being humble and knowing you are on the losing side. Not apologize for your position, but accept the will of the board.
And you're wanting language to say that, how we should say that as an adult? Or we should just know that because we've said that we're going to be, we can disagree without being disagreeable?
Yeah, I mean, maybe that.
Yeah, I think my concern is, and maybe I, I think about this too much because of my, my background as a lawyer and First Amendment rights and things like that. But I would not want, I personally think that somebody is not necessarily being disagreeable. Even let's say that you took the six to one vote and it was on a big public issue and you felt like later on, you needed to make a Facebook post defending your position again or something. or something like that. I don't want to create a scenario where you're moving on, but you were still advocating for the position that you believed in, but because we have some language in the board handbook, then, then continuing to advocate for a position that you believe in becomes a board handbook policy or a policy violation, and I just want to stay away from that.
I wouldn't want to infringe on any trustee's right to still defend the reason why they voted the way they voted. So in that, that's not at all what I was getting at, but we, if it's, if you think that language would create an atmosphere to stifle that kind of First Amendment, uh, then, then maybe it's not necessary.
I think maybe the scenario you're envisioning is different than mine. Maybe you're thinking of, let's say it's a five-two vote, right? And it takes two trustees to request something to be on the agenda, to put something on the agenda, and those two put the same item on the agenda, meeting after meeting, to relitigate the argument over and over. I think maybe that's a different situation, but even then, I would, I would hesitate to say that that should be here because once we set that here, then I, once you violate, that would be a handbook violation to continue advocating for a position. It might not be fun.
Are you wanting verbiage that essentially says wins with grace?
Yeah.
Like he said.
Yeah.
Okay, so I think it's separate. I think he wants like a, accept your loss with your head held high and move forward.
Something about like the final vote is the will of the board, something along the lines.
But something that doesn't take away your ability to still advocate for potentially, okay, your viewpoint.
So can you, when, when it comes time to like adopt this again, can you send us a pro pose?
I'll nominate Leanne.
I for sure will not. This is your idea. Yeah. Can you write this? Can you write what you want?
So I, that's a life norm.
David and I have talked about this in a while.
Okay, there we go.
We've got a little some language, but.
Yeah, but if it's, if y'all really don't see that it's necessary, that it's more of a given, but there are a lot of things in here that are common sense, like berating staff.
That's not common sense.
For some boards, it might not be, and I'm thankful that for this board it is, but I, I do agree that that, some of those.
But we have to act like we may not always be the board that A R S D has. We have to set policies of what if it isn't the team that they care, and somebody has a different group of people sitting here.
And that's why I think to have our own language along the line.
See, I, I personally think that it's, like, that the scenario you're worried about is covered by reserving the right to disagree but not be disagreeable.
And there's also put items on the agenda that are not reasonably related to district business. That is under should not, so eventually you can't just keep that in the same thing to the agenda, because that's not reasonable.
Yeah, but I'm not, I wouldn't even be getting, um, someone putting stuff on the agenda, it's just like.
He wants people to not be so, so.
Right, well, and I think for SLAB students, too, that we're talking just about how we function as a team.
Yeah.
And realizing that there's, when you have multiple adults in a room and students in a room and you're a team, you're gonna disagree sometimes, and how we work through that's super important, and not to use inappropriate means to do that. So I think we can figure out something that would fit your list.
I don't want to make this list super long, but I did have one bullet I wanted to ask y'all thoughts on for trustee should, an addition. What would y'all say to adding a bullet, something along the lines of trustee should listen and learn to understand all sides of a complex issue? Because when it does come time to vote, it sure would be nice to have something in writing to ensure that we all seven know all sides of the issue, and we haven't gotten set in our stubbornness, or we haven't, you know, just gone by our thoughts and opinions. We've truly done our research, and we've truly listened and considered all sides of a complex issue. Because even though we all represent students and are entrusted to the student voices, sometimes we don't all see the same path to getting there. What do y'all think about that bullet? Necessary or? Say it again. Trustee should listen and learn to understand all sides of a complex issue.
I can't, I think that kind of covered.
Yeah.
I feel like maybe it's other of those, you know, things people should just know. But I don't, I don't know that we need that.
Okay.
But I'm open to it if, if I'm sorry.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? Going back to the first one that Larry read, no, I just wanted to make sure we have some dialogue about this one, too, and that goes back to the, the, uh, idea of the managerial duties and the board duties that governance and management. My question is this, how do you, how do you want me to act in all of this, too? Because I feel like there's dialogue that needs to happen, and I want to do, I, I understand y'all are reluctant with people in your ear about, like David's, or somebody said, firing the football coach maybe, or whatever it might be, right? There's agendas. How does, how do you want me to have that dialogue with you all? Like, what, what's the norm that we want to set up? Because I think that's important, too. I don't want to overstep, and I don't, I also don't want to understep.
I think a reminder of which path that belongs in, which lane. And just a reminder that, oh, that, you know, has to do with, you know, personnel, that'll be something that I'll direct to H R, or I'll direct back to Dr. Hill, or whatever it might be.
Okay.
I think just a reminder to us that that's, that's not our lane, but here's the person that it should go to, and that you will make sure that they are aware of it.
Can you elaborate on what exactly you were asking?
Like, if there's something, if, if, let's say, if you, you have a community member in your ear about something that is very much an administrative issue, and you bring it to me, how do you want me to have that dialogue with you?
Okay.
Like, is there, do we just say, hey, I got this, I think this might fall in the administration lane, I got this, and if you need follow-up, let's talk board, we can follow up with you? Or is it, um, do we need to have more discussion about that? I just want to make sure that I'm handling that well, because that's, that's a challenge to.
Well, and I'm glad you asked that, and I'm sure that's come up, you know, and I, I'm sure naturally, you know, it, it will come up in the future. I'm just gonna throw this out there. For me, I, and I, this is for me, I don't know if everyone feels the same, this should be a procedure, but I, if I do that ever, I, it would be unintentional, and I would want you to just tell me directly, like, hey, this falls under me, forward that to me, and I got it, Sarah. Would y'all accept the same, like, because if I do something, I don't want Matt to have come to the whole board and say, hey, guys, remember?
I think that also falls on deaf ears. Sometimes we always are, we look at everybody else.
Exactly.
And we don't see the plank in our own eyes. So when you said, and I'm gonna give myself as an example, you gave one in the corner in a closed session, and I said, you mean my guy? And you're like, yep.
I want you to.
But I want to know, like, oh, we're talking about my situation, we're not just, oh, it's not me, it's the person next to me.
Yeah.
And I think it's easier to hold us accountable when we do it directly.
Yeah.
I do think there's times we do need those general reminders, but I also would hope at some point that we have trust as a trustee and a superintendent, in, in a dialogue that's open enough that he can say those to us.
Yeah.
The same way we can also push back on you, that would say, yes, it may be your lane, but because of X, Y, and Z here is why I do feel like I should be involved, and it's an open dialogue.
Absolutely, and I think that that's where that, that getting into governance is a really important thing for us to talk about, because that agreement right there and where, where the line is, it's blurry sometimes.
Yes.
And we, we just have to be able to, in my mind, we just have to be able to talk through that and be okay talking through that. And I want to make sure if I bring it up, I'm not stepping on toes, you know, that y'all are okay with me bringing it up, but realizing that my job is, is also to be open to the dialogue about, is that a solid line, or, or do I need to reduce it or something?
Yeah, they, they talk about this in governance, law as well, and especially with a new superintendent, as we're kind of forming, storming, and then norming.
Yeah.
Our storming has been a pretty light sprinkle.
Yeah.
So far, and we've been blessed because of that, uh, so far. Uh, but I think it would be behooves, I think, that to work through those issues and have our own norms on how to deal where that line ends, you know, what kind of governance model we have and what's, there's a lot of gray areas with a team of A, as you know, and, and, but where we can demarcate where your role clearly is and where ours isn't, and what's the gray area that we have to jointly own.
I think the, I'm good with those, as long as everybody else is good with just those individual conversations, or if you've emailed me something, I'll pull you aside and say, hey, can we talk about this more, here's why, and we talk about it more, but I want to make sure that you're, we're okay with that.
Can we take it one step deeper, though?
Sure.
So say we do disagree, and say, let's say it is a worst case as a superintendent, where you say this is my lane, and any trustee says, actually, I would like to have more of the dialogue. If we don't feel that you are open as superintendent, what would you, you want that next step to be? Is it to go to our president and say, we need to have a dialogue together? Is it we go to H R and write, what, what do you want?
Yeah, it wouldn't be H R, H R is an administrative function, so.
Sorry, Scott, I tried to.
I think, I think the, you know, I think the way we always work through things, again, is the individual, and I think almost every time I'll, I'll figure out, we'll figure out a way to, to solve it. And I, I think that if we can't, that's where your board president comes in, and we sit with the board president.
And that was my question, is what is that second? Say it, Doug.
I think so.
It's not always.
I think that's, I, from my point of view, I think that makes sense. I, I really don't think most of the time we'll ever get there. I think the more we talk about it, the more we'll figure out where those lines are, and we'll come to a mutual agreement on that.
And I would say, and just clear as kind, so I'm giving examples.
Yeah.
So we can all be solidly calibrated. If, if, like, excuse me, that's an example, if you've already addressed something with me, and I continue to step into operations instead of governance, at, at that point, too, I think, I think it would be appropriate for Matt to loop in Justin, and as board president, he addresses it with me until it is, like, fixed, and if it can't be fixed, then we need to talk about, okay, next step.
Yeah.
Um, and at that point, next steps would probably be an ethics complaint, because that's out of control. Um, for the sake of time, how much time do we have, President Chaka?
So I was about to suggest, we're at six oh seven, so, um, realizing that there's quite a bit more in the handbook to cover. If you would like to spend a few more minutes on, uh, do's and do nots, or we can move to, um, maybe one more item.
Yes, so the next part is, um, several pages of conduct, pretty much. I did want to, I know I'm skipping around y'all, but I did not want this one to pass us by. Can we all go to number eighteen? Violation of board operating procedures. I think this one's really important. Okay, Ms. Dowler, can you read two S A? I'm sorry. Is anyone already there?
Thank you.
Individual trustees are encouraged to express their concerns privately about another trustee's performance directly to that trustee.
Okay, this one's huge. So individual trustees are encouraged to express their concerns privately about another trustee's performance directly to that trustee. So I, again, I think that we all should really consider this and be disciplined with our own selves with this, because imagine if every single judgment call we made, and every single, you know, frustration we had, imagine if we always only did this, how high functioning we would be. And sometimes it's really easy to slip away from it, because you got a vent, or you got a whatever, but truly, like, I hope we can stay committed to this. And then look at B, if addressing the issue directly with the trustee does not resolve the concern, then the discussion with the board president is appropriate. I feel that that's a really good policy to have in place. And only if it gets to that point would we loop in our board president. So do you guys like that norm? Do you guys have anything, um, you'd want to tweak about it?
I think it's fine just the way it is.
Is there anything that needs a reminder? And I, I am thinking of specific situations, that we don't go to the superintendent with complaints about board with our colleagues. We, that makes me uncomfortable. Uh, I, I want it to be, I want us to do what this sets up point A and point B, and I don't think we have been, um, I don't think we've held ourselves accountable for this. Is there any language that needs to be added that is a reminder to us and to future trustees that doc, that the superintendent, whoever it is, is not the mediator?
That's important. We gotta govern ourselves.
Yeah. And I know myself, and I know each of you, and I would be, I would so appreciate it if, like, I'll use David as a example, David, I'm doing something that he thinks is not a line, or whatever, he comes straight to me and has that radical candor and just talks to me about it. I know sometimes that is so uncomfortable, and I know sometimes that it's almost like, is it even worth bringing it up? Because I, I know Sarah won't change her mind about it, but like, unless we have the conversation, there's no awareness, and there's no growth. And, you know, more than half the time, it's just our own anxiety that gets in the way. But the stakes are too high. What we're elected to do, the stakes are too high to let our own comfort levels get in the way. So I think that this is a really good one for us to just really try to commit to.
Yeah, we, we have that conversation all the time. Unfortunately, it's probably the other way around, but.
You said it, not me.
No, I agree.
Is, is there any other piece of this whole part that y'all want, want to just hit before we move forward with the rest of our evening? Because I, I hate that we're cutting short of time, but I don't want to skip anything else that you guys feel is absolutely pertinent for tonight.
And honestly, we can, I think we, it would be wise for us to bring this back to continue the discussions and to work through it.
Yeah.
I don't think we need to adopt something that we don't.
No.
We're not all in on.
Yeah, there's, you know, number nine in communication, I think we need to talk about our board communication, and some of the changes that we've made that I would like to see codified in this. So like, the fact that the whole executive committee is involved with agenda setting, uh, but then also like reporting out from the committees, that's really important. And even our external committees, I think that anyone that serves on any external committees, we should have a every meeting chance for that, the whole board, to get up, be brought up to speed.
Okay. Any last minute comments?
So from what I'm hearing, we'll continue this conversation, we'll figure out a time to bring it back, and keep, keep plugging away, and then we'll, Sarah, does it sound good that we'll pick up maybe with, it looks like page number eight?
Yes.
Where we start going through the numbers?
Thank y'all so much. This was, I, it was powerful for me, and it was for y'all, too. Thank you, guys.
Great suggestion. All right, so, um, we will now move to closed, we're gonna move down to the board conference room. So on September fifth, twenty twenty-four, beginning at six thirteen P M, the Board of Trustees will convene in closed session pursuant to sections five-five-one, point zero-seven-one through five-five-one, point zero-eight-four, and five-five-one, point zero-eight-nine of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act for the topics set forth on the agenda. We're now in closed.